All the meeting in order and uh, Trustee Stone, would you please give us the indication?
That's right. Most gracious God, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for this meeting tonight, Lord, and the privilege we have to represent this college and to vote and act on things that need to be done. We pray for your presence with us. Give us leadership, guidance. These things we pray in Christ's name.
You lead. Thank you. Do we hear any comments from the public? We announce the next order of business is to, we're going to open a public hearing on proposed tax rates of point zero one one zero nine nine zero for the regular tax district and point oh four three oh two oh for the Palestine branch campus maintenance district as the tax rates to support fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. We hope now open this up for a public hearing. Anyone here to address that? Hearing none, go here. Motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Consider and discuss both tax rates for the fiscal 2023-2024 budget?
The motions are in front of y'all and it's got to be two separate ones read this, this way.
Trustee Stone?
Ready?
Yes, sir.
I move that property tax rate increase by the adoption of the tax rate of zero point one one zero nine nine zero, which is effectively at eight point four zero percent increase in the tax rate in one of the Palestinians.
Well, it has to be separate, so we have to do a second for that.
A second for that. Mr. I mean, Trustee Day seconded. All in favor? We need a motion now for the Palestine branch campus maintenance district.
Mr. Chair, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of zero point zero four three two four three zero two zero, which is effectively an eight point six zero percent increase in the tax rate.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All vote, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Consider, Trustee before.
All right, I got a presentation for you today. All right, can I give you an update to start the school year and what's been happening over the last few weeks? We kicked this semester off with convocation and I want to recognize three individuals that have received awards. The Ray Williams Teaching Excellent Award went to Brian Baumgartner. The Staff Excellent Award went to Caroline Whitaker. Sorry, no photo was available. And then the third one was presented towards the Impact Award to Jesse Galindez. All these were recognized by their peers, by committee for all their hard work and contribution over the last year. So congratulations to those three. Terrell kicked off their convocation as well. Lot of excitement. Denver Airheart's, who's the interim chair, is doing a fabulous job in, on the Terrell campus and a lot of things in the works as we plan for, you know, the workforce education center up there and addition of the plumbing electrical program, which I'll update you shortly. Here is the rendering of what's going on in Palestine at the multi-purpose building for the partnership with Texas Department of Criminal Justice. All the engineering is done. It's going out for, we posted in the newspaper for bids and then on the nineteenth, is that correct? September nineteenth, we'll have a bid opening at 2:00 PM and then we'll review those bids and have something presented for the board on the twenty-fifth. But that kind of gives you a little render where it's going to be located on the campus of Palestine. Just some campus improvements. As you can tell, we've been working hard throughout the summer to bring a little bit more life to our campuses. Kind of gives you a little bit of fore and after on the picture on my left, how faded the patient had become. And thanks to Wesley Jones and the work that he's done in painting in that project and you can see how brighter it is to see those improvements. Here are some of the improvements inside the nursing, vocational nursing program on the Palestine campus. They were able to kick off class on time. All construction was completed from a nursing skills lab, computer lab, and classroom for our nursing program down there. And we currently have nineteen students in that vocational nursing program. And about two weeks before semester started, we had a great nurse pending down there and kind of about fifteen new vocational nurses. Some of the renovations gone on the Terrell campus as far as the electrical and plumbing program, some classroom renovations. Some of the equipment's not in yet, but here's some example of some of the equipment that's going to be put in the classroom to help with plumbing and electrical training. Kristin, you want to add anything about the type of equipment? It's just kind of hands-on computer-type equipment that they work with and test on before going out into the building.
Right. It's kind of simulated practically what they would do in the industry when they're out there. But it's also, we, I think you had some additional pictures that's going to show some of them.
Just those.
Okay. Well, we also in the classrooms have walls, locked-up walls, where like the students can actually go in and run wiring or, you know, the path for plumbing and everything. So it's not just going to be through the simulation machine, but they'll also get some practical experience as well.
Thank you. In Coffin, a CDL program, we run seven cohorts at the Coffin campus per year with a max of six drive, six students per cohort. And we just started a second site in Palestine and we'll look to do the same, run seven cohorts. And here's a picture of the truck that rolling down the highway. So you cannot beat that advertising when you see that rolling down the highway there. Some updates on our campus. I know Dr. Cornell's very excited about this. The east and west halls were looking pretty rough, as you can see in the picture on the right. Wesley Jones, also the person who had the contract to do this, painted up all the kind of the patient underneath the patient, the downspout gutters, et cetera, et cetera, to, I mean, if you haven't driven by, you need to drive by. It looks brand new. Thing is, now the general studies building needs to be painted because it sticks out like an eyesore. But we do have plans in the summer to do some painting and work on the windows. Some of those windows need to be restored because the glazing and stuff is loose and they could probably fall out. So we're going to have to work on that as we move into the summer. But, but I'm telling you, some paint and some cleanup does amazing to make our campus look good. Big news for the Health Science Center. On September thirteenth, our accreditation body will be in to visit as we will work our way through ACE and accreditation. Doctor Zer, you want to add anything about the nursing accreditation process?
This is a standard group meeting. We just went through our SAC C O C accreditation visit last year with the refined colors had no remarks at all. So we're anticipating another accreditation from our ACE and accreditation body as well.
And, and this is one of the highest credations for your nursing programs.
Let's do the first without Helen.
Yes, sir. But Helen is still around. She's still consulting for us and adjusting for us. So she hasn't gone away too far from us.
All right. Of course, with the start of school, before that, you have moved in. I'm going to give a shout out to my better half, Stephanie and little bits Brennan, as they probably helped move in seventy-five percent of the students during move-in. Lot of parents really enjoyed that. Few fathers pulled her inside saying they're, they know their daughter's going to be a long way from home. Do you mind keeping an eye on them? As a matter of fact, Steph got a text message from the father last night checking on his daughter and about what she needs to do at Christmas break, about her stuff and everything. But I was able to be there when I was up in meetings. It was a great, great thing except for the few tweaks with the elevator. Apparently I put too much on the elevator. But it was a lot of fun meeting the parents and, and so forth as we moved them in. And it was just, if you imagine, a lot of excitement with the parent, you know, and also emotional leaving their kids for the first time. So, first day of class, some images, pictures of the first day of class. The campus, when it's the first week of classes, it's like a life to campus. I mean, people everywhere. Our foundation was serving coffee and donuts and people were getting their picture taken. And then the bottom picture there is the first housing meeting. They had a packed house there. And I just want to run through some numbers with you. As we started the first day of class last Thursday, we had five thousand five hundred ninety-nine students enrolled. In talking with Mary from dual credit, she was estimating another thirty-five-ish or so to be enrolled. So as of today, we should be sitting around fifty-six, thirty-four. Cosmetology is full on all three locations with wait lists. The ADU programs have two hundred and forty students, hundred sophomores, one hundred and forty freshmen, med surg is full. The lineman program, I know there's been a lot of anxiety about the lineman program. Congratulations to Kristin and her staff. Kelly, it's full. Both campuses with wait lists. So good applause for them.
Good shout out to Karen Schittman and Denver Airheart because they were incredibly involved in that.
So anytime you can have wait lists, that's a good thing. The prison program as of Thursday had about two hundred students properly completing their paperwork. So it's a good thing. The R N to B S N program have about twenty-six students in it. So they're full there. We have three hundred and ninety-three student athletes, three hundred and ninety-two. I almost think Harold told me Thursday that that was up to three ninety-seven.
Right at four hundred right now.
Okay. I remember him catching me Thursday and said he had added some more. So we're around four hundred students in housing. And the plumbing and electrical program, plumbing has nine, electrical has seven. And that's, you know, as you experienced last year with the lineman program and the numbers, first semester were lower, this is a good start. And in our conversations, it really came a very kind of, one of the topics for, we had to have pending for so long because of the SAC C O C that students just heard pending and we're not necessarily confident that the program's going to start. Now, it said pending accreditation approval in language that really didn't pertain to them, but it stuck in their mind. And I think Kelly said in talking to students that she heard that feedback. So we're actually expecting as we move in, and there are also discussions about starting a cohort in the spring and finishing them up in the summer, that this program, since we already have our SAC C O C approval, we have the Mark Foundation support, we look for this program to be mimicking the lineman program as we enter its second year. So, so great news there for those two programs. The dual credit, we are setting around as of Thursday, two thousand four hundred eighty-six, like I said, estimating some additional enrollment should put us around two thousand five hundred and fifty students in our dual credit. This was the first time that many of our ISDs utilized the electronic application in that process. And, and so little bumps in here and there, but our team has been working hand in hand with these school districts to help through their enrollment process, getting all the documents submitted. I know sometimes they get a little frustrated because like, oh, can you get the students to submit the documents sometime? I told a group, we have the same trouble when they're eighteen and nineteen. So don't, don't stress. We all go through that same trouble of getting all the documents submitted for enrollment. But those are all good strong in numbers, numbers for enrollment. Philip, did you want to add anything else to the enrollment numbers or anything?
Just to say that we're on track with where we were at this last year at the same time in all the categories. Well, not all the categories, but many. We've had some growth in our multiple locations category. And so that's up about ten percent. Our dual credit is up about nine percent. The health science center is up nine percent. Let's see, Terrell is up twenty percent and this will amaze everyone, but Palestine's at forty-one percent. And in percentage-wise, that's a lot of people, but numbers-wise, obviously we start with small numbers. It's going to be a small number. Last year we had fifty-one people at this time and now we're at seventy. We're doing okay.
All moving in the right direction.
And the campus here, at least here on our campus here in town, it's much busier this year than it has been past. And part of that is because of the multiple locations. We're seeing more people, more cars on campus, more people walking around. It's just been fun.
Dr. Cornell, how's the housing stack up? Is it about the same or?
It's about the same. And honestly, I don't know. I don't, it's going to be real difficult to grow the housing numbers the way we are set up right now because most people are very at a distance. They're going to go to one of our satellite campuses. They're going to go to, you know, Terrell or they're going to go to Palestine. The way we've grown in the past, we went from three sixty to four hundred was through supporting programs because we were proud to live on campus. So it's going to be interesting to try to get more people to live on campus from here in town. Although we started talking about a marketing campaign to do just that, say, what is your experience like? What is your real college experience like? And we could have that experience for a third of the cost with what we get that in the university. We've got some ideas still. We just haven't seen the uptick in the numbers yet.
And we only have about forty beds. Are, time do you take the coaches that are living in the dorms or anything? We only have about forty beds open. And most east and west need some renovations to.
Already started. We've got one room that's under development now. We're doing a sort of a trial on one room to change the color, put the furniture in and make it look as nice as we can. And that's going to be sort of the showplace for this year. And then next summer, we're hoping to be able to do that with all of the rooms that are in South Hall and County because much of West Hall is going to be done.
Not said east, but south.
All right, we know you.
Some more pictures of first day, first week of school of our students. Like I said, this, this is a lot of excitement. Shirts that were passed out, student activities. I came, I saw. And of course, some of our maybe future Trinity Valley students right there, one of them's more near and dear to my heart, along with Richard Hawkins and his girls, joined up the first home volleyball game. Like I said, some more things, you know, our cheerleaders were at the farmer's market putting on some stunts. That's opening Saturday. The mayor, Terrell, presented me with Cespen Pino, Ces and Pino coin for a hundred and fifty years. It has T V C on it. Our volleyball girls were helping with the food pantry. Football team kind of early pitch getting ready for their first ballgame. And I've never seen a trophy that big, so I had to take a picture of that trophy because it was bigger and brighter. And that was the cheer trophy from last year's national championship. In the corner there, I did an interview with a Facebook cast called Along Thirty-One. And that was released last week, just kind of highlighting Trinity Valley. First games of the season. Let's give a shout out to our men's women's soccer teams. They reported their first victories in the history of the program. The men scored a three-o victory in a hundred and ten degree weather. In the last ten minutes of the game, they scored three goals, quick goals. And our women went on the road to score a three-two victory. Our volleyball team is seven and one on the season. They suffered their first loss on Saturday against the number one team in the country, Florida Southwest. But even despite that loss, our women moved up in the polls and are ranked third in the country. And our men's football team took the field Thursday night, ranked fifteenth in the country against Snow College, who they've not beaten in the last three tries. And they've scored with the last ten seconds to go up by a touchdown to take home a thirty-four to twenty-seven victory. And now our men are number seven in the country. So kudos to our athletic teams and their accomplishments. I want to recognize these two young ladies. As a matter of fact, I think both these young ladies not only received an Intermountain invitation, all Kermit team, I believe both the same two young ladies received the Battle of the Beaches all tournament team. So congratulations to Sophie and Azul. They have done a great job representing our, our team. Our cardets had their show off and they also had their first public performance at the football game at halftime. And Emma Cox and her group are doing a wonderful job. It was a great performance despite the warm temperatures. I think I updated y'all last time, but you know, the economic, Stewart McGregor's in the house. We always like when Stewart's in the house. That was an amazing event at the Coffin EDC Summit, representing Bell Spoke. We had many leaders in the industry and obviously a fantastic panel. Now I started.
Best, best birthday.
Talking about the role of education and the developing of the workforce. Graduation for summer. We had a hundred and fifty-three graduates and ninety-three walk. So it was a great day in the Cardinal gym. The Cardinal takeover, Rock and Tour School started. A group of us took over the local radio station one morning to announce a scholarship giveaway that our foundation put together for us and gave us some money. We gave away four one thousand dollar scholarships to students that were not currently enrolled. And we had over twenty-plus applications for that scholarship. Thanks to the Sizzle and for allowing us to take over their airwaves and to do this promotion. It was a great, great morning. Had lots of positive feedback and fun. We've kind of declared this fall the Cardinal takeover. And all of our faculty, full-time faculty and staff were blessed with a Cardinal takeover shirt. So hopefully one day when it pulls off, we'll get a group picture with all of us in our Cardinal takeover shirts. I came, I saw the valley. One morning I came to campus and this group of students were sitting on the bell tower having a morning prayer, just excited about being in Trinity Valley. That will, that really melts your heart when you see that. Another update I want to give you, our foundation had a little bit of a challenge during convocation to sign up employee giving. We signed up, over the last two weeks, we have signed up fifty-seven new employees with approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars a month giving. So that now brings our grand total up to a hundred and sixty of our employees give with a grand total of twenty-six hundred dollars a month going to our foundation. So kudos to our faculty and staff and our employees for signing up and contributing to the foundation. So a round of applause for them. All right. Any questions?
Morrison?
Yes.
I got an intuitive text from Courtney Curran. She was in charge of our international program. And she wanted us to let you know that we're twenty percent in points higher in our international population issue than we were last time in fall. She said we'd like to mention her and what she had done. So she wanted that to be, last year we had seventy-one international students, which is, I believe, one of the highest we've ever had.
Awesome. Thank you. So any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. That's great. At this time, we want to consider the approval of the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three minutes and the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes at the specialty. They're here in motion. You all sent those minutes. They're here motion to approve those.
So moved.
And seconded by Trustee Stone. Consider business financial investment reports. Mr. Hopkins?
Yes, sir. It's not a lot to report on this month. Most of our revenue is coming out. I'm going to highlight a couple of things. We're still slightly over four million dollars in tuition. Our investments, and we'll talk a little bit more about investments as the interest rates have gone up. Clearly, we're bringing in rental money on the side, half million dollars worth of money with a hundred thousand. We're one point nine million in property taxes over the last year. No big surprise there. On the M and O, I really don't have anything else to report there. I will say that trouble of interest rates. I've never signed somebody first order for air conditioner. And the second thing is it stopped reflecting here, but we did have a battery blow up in our generator. That was funny. So anyway, a lot of heat-related stuff that we had to deal with under the little share and maintenance category. Well, we could go, I'm going to skip over to the end of the best one we've worked. One more. The, we had talked about the additional CDs. I just wanted to point out that we finally were able to, here in June, start getting those set up. Thanks to Bank of Trust, we set up a money market paying four and a half. Simmons Bank, that's the group that we did the Cedar CDs with. You start seeing those CDs roll into the mix and the rest of those in August will be, you'll be seeing those. It did help us. We went, I can't remember what, the difference in a month, I think was about a hundred and three thousand dollars in investment income for the part. So interest rates stay up, but I'm here for the feds probably will. Next page is cap reserve. You'll see this again on the over twenty-five thousand. And again, I'll point out that the two projects we have going down Palestine Mall and North West Dorm. We did pay Corey Prech's bunch for the engineering and fitting and so forth and the stuff that they're doing on the multi-purpose Q D C J building. And the last page is just the over twenty-five thousand. I pointed out the biggest one, but if y'all have any questions, I'll let it go. The other thing is the nine hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars that, once we got the killer property, sold that money to the foundation, it was worth a lot. So we wrote a check out to the foundation and that's the two unusual.
David, are the last two, are those annual payments, I suppose?
Yes, they are.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Hopkins? We're here in motion to approve. Anybody actually report? Trustee Day makes a motion. Is there a second? Fifty, Henry seconds. All in favor? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item of business is consider and discuss the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four audit and continue educational schedule and social spending.
All right, just looking for board's approval for the student handbook and associate tuition fees for adults in community education classes. You have the attachment here.
Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion? Trustee Stone's committed to motion. There a second?
Second.
Second. All, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All vote, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Next order of business is consider and discuss approval of auto liability and property insurance coverage. Board, Brett Thomas is back. You're up.
So we're a little scared a little bit of where we go, I think. And really, nothing has changed. I've updated your work sheet. Still not have an optional code from the other party that I thought we would get something in. Still don't have it. And they're just really, really dragging their feet. They not get something. I think we will, but at this point, we've got to be forward as far as the board's concerned. So the prices that we gave you before has stayed the same. On the parquet sheet, I did add, go ahead and add in the rates for them so that you can kind of see that, see what the rates did. And then as we talked before, the property values did increase. We did make it a substantial increase in value, well, about fifteen, almost fifteen million dollars increase in property values to bring them more to replacement cost values. Property values to bring them more to replace that house values. And so that's, that's what you have, if the numbers didn't change, I'm going to say. Any questions? Are they going to be able to feed us or do something?
Well, we talked about the issues. We met a bid, T P S hasn't come through. We need coverage September first. All I can say is we will keep trying to see if the industry changes any in the future. And I think Doc Griesen indicated that the best builders are getting insurance. I'm thankful that we have insurance. A little high, but we need to have it. Well, I would recommend that. Approve each quote for the.
David, then the bid.
And. So after nine one, they won't be like, they'll be short rate. And they'll, as I say, actually, the insurance company, one of the guys will probably kiss the program. I still don't like this, but they've been, they've been very accommodating. So if we continue and got something in, you know, I, I told David, I encourage us to look at it very seriously and look at what if. Something does come in, doesn't mean the terms are going to be any better than what we have. I definitely want y'all to see it and I get it.
So like, when, probably.
They, yeah, I feel very, I feel very comfortable saying that.
It's, it's not a twenty-five percent earned premium?
No, sir. There are some out there that.
You gotta be short right here, but you're not going to have anything.
And there, there, most of the programs out there don't allow you to cancel it all. This program that you're with does, and they just recognize to their members, I mean, they're kind of in it for their members. So they're, they are accommodating, you know, they just ask you to be very careful in that decision-making process. But they're, they're being very fair about that if there's a need for a change. Right now, the last update I had is they haven't lost any members. So, and it's just, it's a bad situation right now.
So I'll read the feature. Well, I think when I look at it, I agree. I just, you know, this is not public record, so they can also see what their competition's doing that. That always makes me a little nervous, but we have to be long, we should look at it.
I think that now, I mean, I, I do think we get something from T P S, it's going to come in in the next couple of days. I've been saying that forever. But I don't, I don't see that really being out there that quick and good. And but I also don't think they're hungry to be, to buy a business, is the best way to say that. They're just, not like the insurance companies are really jumping for joy to have more business on the books. They're just, they're very nervous right now.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here. At this time, we'd like to consider a motion to. For the approval of auto liability and property insurance coverage. Trustee Henry makes a motion. Seconded by trustee Day. All in favor? All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next item is consider and discuss board members' training requirements. For the education codes, six one dot oh eight.
Looks like everybody is up to. Speed on their train.
Very good. Next order of business, consider and discuss policy change.
Alright. The Don's is here to answer your questions as well, but just reconsider. We have kind of a red line clean copies of the D A of the policy that were reviewed. I know you've had time to review this before the meeting. Any questions or? The biggest change is dealing with non-exempt employees. Do you want to kind of share a change on overtime compensation?
Yeah, so previously in the past, it was basically, it was an agreement between the employee and supervisor, whether it be a bit of time or overtime. And what we have found out through having conversations with employees on campus and based on a recommendation for our staff council. They really wanted to go just having an overtime, you know, not doing a wait, it's a great time option. A lot of employees don't even, they don't even use it, but we do have employees who have thanked some hours. And what we have seen is that, you know, because our policy to waste right now, those hours continue to roll over year after year. And so what happens is if they're going to afford a change of a tradition or if they leave college, you pay out that compensatory time. But at a higher rate, because it's not at the same rate that it was created. So it costs the college more money in the long run to do that. So in order to cut that cost down and to just go ahead and pay the employees for their overtime when they work it. It just, it was a positive feedback from the employees.
And that amount is, to me, that that amount's twenty-five thousand dollars?
Correct. You're paying it out right now. It costs the college about twenty-nine thousand.
And we'll start clean slate. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, do we hear a motion to accept the board's policy change? All in favor? All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Consider and discuss personnel matters.
Or before you, you have kind of first, you have the personnel updates, reservations, decorations, retirement, new hires, and reclassification before you.
Your motion to approve that? Ross Singer makes motion. Seconded by trustee Monk. All in favor? All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Ross Singer's time, that time and I. But they are second on that. Seconded by trustee Stone. Thank you very much, and thank y'all for being here.